Good evening. This is the formal meeting of the Gardner City Council on Monday, November 18th, 2024. Ladies and gentlemen, please hold.
President.
Councilwoman.
President.
Council General Lawitz.
Present.
Council Harder.
Present.
Council Heath.
Present.
Council Decker.
Present.
Council O'Nah. Council Tito Mina.
Present.
Council Tsusami. Council Tyros.
Present.
Present. For the public watching this evening, we are meeting formally tonight regarding Agenda Item 11289, An Ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Part I thereof entitled Administrative Legislation, and Item 11423, A Proposal Relative to the Rules of the City Council. We will begin with Item 11289. This item was posted publicly in the City Council's regular meeting packet for our Monday, May 20th, 2024 meeting, where the City Council voted to refer the item to the Finance Committee for further study and report. A lengthy document that has been revised several times since the time it went to study in the Finance Committee is included in our council packet. The Finance Committee recently reported on the item, and the City Council voted to meet as a committee the whole on it, which is our purpose for meeting this evening. At this time, I would like to give the Finance Committee an opportunity to speak on the item as it was previously with the committee. Council General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. As you stated, this has been with the council for some time. I think version eight. I thought it was seven, but we're on version eight at this point. There's been a lot of hard work by a lot of groups on this. The heads of city departments, boards, commissions have all had their input at the beginning. Other councillors have done their due diligence. The mayor and his office have put a lot of time into this. The majority of the work was the updating the organization of the ordinance. Things were put in overtime, one-offs overtime, and their setup was not consistent, which made it more difficult to read. There were extra parts in there that were no longer needed about when boards or commissions were initially created. Those type of things were removed. I think the way it's been organized is much, much more efficient, much easier to read, and the pieces that were no longer applicable were taken out. There have been some changes as well, and some updates. Glad we're having this as a formal meeting, so the rest of the council has the chance to voice any questions, concerns they may have with any of the reorganization or substantive changes that have been done to the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I would also just add, you know, these ordinances are done, and echo everything that Council General Lawitz said. As we were in our Finance Committee discussions, we did talk about how these ordinances are done over a really long amount of time, and we're just like putting them all in one document and doing it all at once. So the fact that it's been in front of us since May should not be a surprise to anybody as we're doing our, our due diligence. But again, I echo everything that Council General Lawitz said, and at this time, I would like to next give the mayor the opportunity to speak, as the Finance Committee did correspond with him regularly in our meetings on this item. And he then submitted the requested changes. We went back over the document, and I'd like to give him an opportunity to speak from the work that was done in his office. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Madam President. As is stated in the letters included in the packet, this is something that I spoke about in my inaugural address on January 4th of this year that we would begin looking into. When the Budget Memorandum was issued to the department heads on November 28th of 2023, with the request for the budget documents to be reviewed, I also asked each department head to review the ordinances in the city's codebook that related to their departments. At the same time, all of the chairs of our boards and commissions in the city, when they received their version of the budget memo, asked them for their FY25 budget documents. Also reviewed, also to review and make recommendations on the ordinances that relate to their boards and commissions. That's what started this whole process that's here. So any changes that you see to the ordinances that are included in this book in front of you, either in the ordinance document or in the redlined versions themselves, actually were initiated by the chairs of the boards and commissions in the departments themselves. Included in the overall theme, rather than getting into the nitty-gritty of the 45-page document in and of itself, is that there were a lot of ordinances that no longer related to city activities, mainly in the personnel ordinances, in the fact that many of the ordinances referenced, you know, certain provisions for personnel policies, for positions that when the ordinance was put in place, the positions were non-union. And then when those positions voted to unionize, it was no longer the ordinances that controlled the policies related to those conditions. It was the collective bargaining agreements that related to those in terms of time off, holidays, vacation benefits, personal time, all of those relating to the fire department, the police department, the DPW, the dispatch department, animal control officers, inspectors in the building department and health department. And I believe those are, I believe I got all of our unions, but the DPW has two unions and the fire depart, and the police department has two unions as well. And then our City Hall Clerical Sapp, that's a union I was forgetting. So a lot of the ordinances that were in the book, particularly with our personnel ordinances, still referenced benefits to those positions, but we were not legally able to follow what the ordinance said because we had to follow what the collective bargaining agreements of the union contract. So that cleans up those positions that are unionized now and not followed under city ordinances. Additionally, there were some discussions that were had relating to the certain stipends, certain positions that are no longer in existence, but were still in the ordinance code. The superintendent of the fire alarm system used to monitor the pullbox system that we had on the telephone poles throughout the city. That position is no longer in existence, and those pullboxes are no longer there. There used to be a dynamite stipend if any city employee was required to use dynamite in the course of their employment with the city. We hire that out now, and our insurance would not have us have our own city employees using dynamite on any city project right now. And there's other things that were repetitive, in terms of if you looked at the way the city code is written right now, and you go to the city's codebook either online or in print, you'll see that the numbers of the chapters are not chronological. In terms of, you'll go from 1 to 37 to 86 to 32, and a bunch of numbers in between. The reason why that was done in the codification of the ordinance code in the mid 2000s was so that everything could be alphabetical. But when you run into a system where everything's alphabetical, it's, some had department as the head of the alphabetical, so they were under D, and some did building, comma, department. So that put the building department under B instead of under D, like other places that had Department of Community Development under D. And so there's certain things like that, but it just was confusing to follow in terms of departments that way, but it also mixed our departments, commissions, other aspects like that. So this is really just cleaning things up to make things easier to follow. And it also puts everything in a solidified place, too. Each board and commission had a different process that it followed, in terms of, some said appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the council, some said nothing, some said appointed by the mayor for a term of three years, some said nothing, some said two years, some said seven. A lot of that relates to state law, too. So we undertook a review of all the state laws that related to these positions, be it, planning board members have to be appointed for a term of three years, but members of the GRA have to be appointed for a term of five years. So all of that, too, was set out by state statutes. So there was a full legal in-depth review of relating to these positions as well. But it basically says in one section now up at the top, rather than in each individual department, unless otherwise stated by city charter or state law or any other provisions of the code that's included here, positions are to be a three-year appointment put up by the mayor, confirmed by the city council. Because state law would have differences for certain positions, or because the city charter itself may have differences for certain provisions, like the city clerk, the treasurer, the auditor, those positions that are elected by the council by the charter itself, that's why it also has that line, unless otherwise stated by the charter or the state law. That way, we just have a uniform system across the board with everyone. There are some other sections, particularly at the beginning, that reference the seal. There was actually a holiday ordinance in which some students from Amm Street School back in the 1980s, I believe, sent a petition for it that the council adopted renaming Patriots Day Colonel Thomas Garder Day in the City of Gardner. Different things like that that are just, were also thrown in with the structure of our departments. So just putting everything in similar categories to where they were. There was a lot of work that went into this. Like was said earlier, this is version eight. The changes that came really from city councillors who viewed the ordinances once it was submitted to the Finance Committee in May, after we spent from December through May drafting the initial draft of it with our department heads and the chairs of our commissions. Other updates came as department heads changed, and we got new department heads who said, you know, I took a look at this, I think this could be tweaked here. And the majority of the changes in the personnel ordinance came from a study that was done through both the Mass Municipal Association and my office of comparing the time off benefits and the other benefits to our employees that Gardner offered compared to other cities around the Commonwealth, but also to private sector companies in our area, too. As we're trying to make our positions more competitive and maintain our workforce and get people here to stay longer and draw in new individuals to the city's employment, so that we can maintain a marketable employment base here in the city and employment pool, really seeing that, you know, if someone comes in from another, either another municipality with experience in that position, or from the private sector with a commensurate experience in another position, do we really want them, you know, and they're getting three weeks vacation somewhere else, but they get one week vacation or two weeks vacation when they start here, it makes it so that we lose applicants sometimes, or we lose good people that we've offered positions to because they see that they'd be taking a hit, not just in pay, but in other places when they're trying to come here. So that was really the impetus behind all of that. This is the first stage in that ordinance review that I talked about on January 4th in the inaugural address that I gave at our inauguration. But this was really the biggest one that was there, because it's the, not only the structure of our departments, but it's also the biggest section of the city code. So I'm happy to answer any questions that come up during the meeting. And I really want to thank our department heads, our boards and commissions who met on this, and then the councils also for your collaboration over the course of the eight different versions of this, and however many there are to come at the pleasure of the council. After that, we're happy to continue to work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question. You had mentioned this is the first phase. I know I asked you about it. If you want to mention the other phases that we should expect?
Yeah, there'll be a traffic ordinance that comes before the council right now. Right now, we have vehicles in traffic, traffic vehicles, abandoned vehicles, wrecked vehicles, vehicles in the second hand, parking, and parking meters, as all separate sections of the city code, too, several of which contradict each other. There are some items on the council's agenda that address those contradictions, and that, I think there's three different places right now in the existing code that say parking meters are two hours, and then it's separate, three different sections of the code that say parking meters are three hours. The parking ban ordinance contradicts itself in terms of on-street versus parking lots, because they refer to each other, but then don't correct that reference to each other. So there's likely going to be a traffic ordinance besides those that are before the council right now that are time-sensitive, because the snow is coming soon. We don't know when soon is, but we're trying to make sure we're at least prepared for whenever that soon shall become. So that's why those were separately put up. But there'll be a traffic ordinance that'll be coming before everyone. The two chiefs are reviewing the alarms, alarms, alarm systems, and violations section of the city code. So that will likely be a second grouping that'll come before, and then just a general ordinance, just cleaning up if there's certain aspects that come together. So for instance, water, storm water, wastewater, and different other ones that relate to all the water and sewer enterprise systems, whether certain of those can be contained, we want to keep certain amounts separate. This isn't trying to condense everything into one, but see where it makes sense to put things together if they're related to each other. That way, you're not looking in Sections 1, 6, 8, 12, 52, and 167 to get one answer. And it's just all there together in one. So you can tell someone, you know, this is where you need to look, and they'll be able to find it. So those are the other sections. So we'll have the administrative side. We'll likely have a traffic chapter, a general ordinance review to see something like this, if things can come into separate chapters where there's less substantive change, but more just bringing things together. And then we're, the city's working on a grant application right now to see if we can review our zoning ordinances. That came from a vote taken by the council last year to make sure that our ordinance, excuse me, our zoning map was as correct as possible after the discrepancies that we had last year, but also to see if we are competitive in our zoning ordinances that we have, in terms of making sure that we're business-friendly. If we say Gardner's open for business, are we actually open for business? Are we willing to work with people, with housing developers and everything like that? And there's not saying we have to get rid of every restriction, because there is stuff we still need to regulate. But how many of our regulations, one, contradict each other, because that does exist several places, but two, don't have their intended outcome, or three, are just blocking progress from happening because it was put in a different time. So that's something that we're working on a consultant right now, and both obtaining a grant for and then writing that eventual zoning one, that'll probably not come until springtime. But the other two should be in December or January.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, discussion from the council?
How are we going, how are we going through this? Are we going like page by page through this, or are we?
Nope. If you have questions, we're not going to go page by page through this, councillor.
Well, I have, I have questions. I'm just asking how we're.
Nope. It's just if you want to start a discussion, we'll go on whatever the matter that the council has. And if you want to begin, what was yours?
I can if you want me to. And I promise I won't object to anything here. Okay, my understanding is that this is, the basis for this is that we have a certain code, and we're just rearranging it so it's more logical and streamlined. So that's, that's kind of how I am looking at this. On, there was one, I think there's a typo in here, which I'll just start with. We're talking about temporary appointments. It says to serve for a period not longer than 90 days, and I believe that should be 60 days, because I think the statute is 60 days.
Yeah, the statute is.
60 days.
Yes, that is, that should be 60 days.
So what's that? Can you just like, which section, article?
Okay. Chapter 3, Section 4, Temporary Appointments. It's on the same page. It says Chapter 13, Aging, Council on.
So are you in this document?
No, I'm sorry.
Are you in the redline?
I'm working on, is this version seven?
This is version seven, but this is like the new, this is, this is the old version, redlines. And this version is the version.
Okay, I'm working, I was working on the redline.
Updated one. Okay.
Madam President, that's Section 29 of the ordinance document itself.
Okay, so if you're using this version, it's Section 29.
Well, the sixth page.
Madam President, if I could just clarify, too, if for ease of that, if section is in all capital letters, that's the section of the actual ordinance change document. If sections has a capital S, but the rest are lowercase, that's what the new chapter would look like. So if you're referencing a section of the actual ordinance change, you want to look at the all capital numbers, because that's the actual ordinance document that's changed.
Okay, so, I'm sorry councillor, it was under.
Okay, so yeah, so which, which page, which, are we looking at this one now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and what are we looking for?
It's, I think it's the sixth page of that version, Section 3, Temporary Appointments.
Temporary Appointments, Section 4, Temporary Appointments.
What'd you say, page six?
Maybe you should say, if you have, does everyone have this version with them? Like, this is the one that was printed and given to us, right? Or it should be, or if you had it printed, but it should be, it's the same thing that was in our packet.
Okay, is there something on that?
Section 30 is on the bottom. The very bottom says Section 30. It's in the top half of the page.
Page 11.
Okay, here we go.
So page 11 of the document that was in the packet?
Yep. Okay.
Which is version eight, correct?
Does that mean 90 days? Yeah, it should be 60 days, shouldn't it?
Okay, so that would be amended to 60 days?
Yeah, I believe the statute, the statute is 60 days.
Okay.
Yeah, Chapter 41, Section 61A is 60 days. That's of the general law.
Thank you. Okay, so that would be, okay?
Okay. Where it talks about, so prior to that, Section 1, when it's talking about compensation?
Yes.
Salary is a compensation of any city employee who receives compensation. Any other employees of any departments shall be established by ordinance as a name. Do we, should we be saying, except school employees, employees covered by collective bargaining agreements?
So Section 30, Section 1, compensation is what we're looking at. It's the page before the item we were just looking at. It's page 10.
Because as I understand it, that, those employees covered by collective bargaining agreements aren't, aren't covered by the ordinance for compensation.
Okay.
School employees are not covered, even though they are technically city employees.
Okay. So I think the way we should do this is submit these changes, and, and you've done your homework, councillor, I appreciate that, but just to double-check, you know, that we have everything placed, we'll get an updated document, and we can consider it again at another meeting. And you don't have to agree on that, that's just my thought right now.
Okay. And then I had two other, two other things that are a little more general. One is that I noticed on many of the boards and commissions, they used to have a set number on the board or commission, and it's been adjusted to say up to and a different number. I'm a little uncomfortable with that, because I kind of feel like it should be a set number rather than an up to number, but just.
So you're speaking, I'm sorry, excuse me.
It's very generally.
Okay.
I mean, I know with, say, the zoning board, we just changed it from three to five, and we didn't say up to five, we said five. And so on some of the other boards and commissions, it's been changed from a set number to an up to number. And I can find an example if you want.
I know, if you have the airport commission, the historical commission, Gulf Force, the Gulf Commission.
Right, the Gulf Commission, I think, is currently five, and they went up to seven.
There are those, those changes that give a little more leeway that are there as well, yeah.
And, and you know, a part of me says it should be a set number, because it's, you fill a commission and that's it. I guess my concern is with the mayor starting to play games with, and I'm not, and I'm not accusing this mayor of anything. I'm just saying down the road, somebody saying, oh, well, now I have an opportunity to stack a board or commission by putting two more members on.
I mean, I would say if a, councillor, I saw you.
No worries. My thoughts on this, councillor Brooks, is I would be happy to entertain maybe a law department review of that question, because at the time when we did increase the planning board membership, I had the question of is it proper to have the up to language? That way, if you do not have a full board, they can still act within their powers without being, you know, added a specific amount, just due to the situation we're in City Gardner right now. We have a lot of boards and commissions that aren't fully. Actually had reported on some vacancies just earlier tonight that we have to fill on our cultural commission. So I think that might be an opportunity for a quick answer from the law department on, you know, what's the recommended language? Because I don't think there's, I think it's good, I actually look forward to the standardization of the appointment terms beyond the state statute, changed ones that are longer or shorter, because in the appointments committee, we've had questions of appointments and length in various places. So I'd look forward to a law department comment on that, just have the right terminology.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because the three-year, if I may, the three-year term, to me, is standard. And I noticed in some places, it is also clarified to say that if you're filling a term, completing a term, you complete the term, you don't get a new three-year term. Because I know that's how you lose the staggering on a board or commission, is when you, when you begin to have people who don't, who aren't appointed to complete the term, they're completed for a three-year term. So, yeah.
Any further, from the discussion, do you have something?
I just had one other thing.
Well, did anyone have anything further on that, further discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just throw out, Madam President, it's all valid points, just to make, just to throw it out there, that the at least X number, at most Y number, that's throughout the code, it just mimics a lot of the times the state statutes that say shall have no less than, but shall have no more than. That's just where that came from, just to show where that, it's not like we were just looking to add numbers, that's just, it mimics what the state law description of that commission is. And yeah, the excellent also point on the filling of vacancies for the remainder of the term, after the 50-plus appointments that we had to go through this year because of the number of lapsed appointments that we had, that was the biggest concern that we had, was we lost staggering on the term, which was, which was intended in not only state statute, but in our ordinance book, too. So that's why that was put in to try to correct that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I mean, I would just say, too, like in terms of numbers that you can go up to, and you comment on kind of like stacking a board or commission or something, you know, my thought on that, too, is we have hard enough times, sometimes, like mostly these towns filling boards and commissions and things. So if you give a certain number sometimes, it's like, are you filling it just to fill it? Or do you have people on it that are qualified to be on it? So there's kind of like the other side of that as well, too. Anything else, any other discussion on that item? Councillor?
Okay. And the last thing I have is noted, and the mayor made a comment about it, is the increase in what I would call benefit time, adding an extra week of vacation, adding sick, a week of, five more days of sick time, those kinds of things, which, which is a change in what we've been doing before. And while there's not an out-of-pocket cost, because it's, it's not the same as increasing somebody's salary, there is a cost, because you're giving people additional benefits that they can carry over and cash out when they retire, or time out of the building where somebody else has to come in and cover for them. And so I think we need to be aware of what we're doing, because it's, from my standpoint, it was, it's kind of a rich benefit to do that. I understand the mayor's point that if you're bringing people in mid-career, starting somebody off with two weeks vacation as a new employee is, can be rough. When I went to Pittsburgh, the standard was two, but at the mayor's discretion, he could give three. So given the fact that I'd been working for the City of Gardner for 16 years, I got a third week of vacation at the start. That's, that's one kind of way around it for that particular kind of situation. But it's just, it's just getting that. And then, and then a little picky thing, and I'm not sure it goes, is when a half a day is considered four hours, most people, most non-union employees are not working a 40-hour week, they're working a 37-hour week. So to say a half a day is four hours is giving them a little bit extra. And I don't know, I just, that's, that's the auditor accountant in me that is saying, wait a minute, that's, but whatever. And with that, I'll try and be quiet. Thank you.
We're here to talk, councillor. Councillor Tyros?
In the spirit of debate, I, councillor Brooks, I agree. And I think, you know, coming from an environment, I think the modern workforce has a new expectation of three weeks of vacation to start. I worry if the, the benefit of the time saved outweighs the, the risk of losing potential applicants and having offices empty due to vacancies fulfilling them. So I fully support moving this up to three weeks, and I think, you know, it's, it's much needed in this code. So just my perspective on the matter.
Thank you, councillor, for the discussion. Councillor General Lawitz?
I agree with councillor Tyros. I get the concern from councillor Brooks of having this additional benefit, but the pay, the actual salary, isn't always commensurate to the abilities that are required to do the job in order to draw people. The benefits is kind of the key here for public employment, and I think this is a welcome change for someone who, especially as was discussed mid-career, considering a switch. To suddenly go down to just, just two weeks is a big, a big change, where many of them may be getting up to four already at that point, or five. And then to switch to two, I think is too, too much for someone with a lot of experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? I would also say that you'll have people get hired in certain positions, and I don't know if you can generally speak from personnel point of view, I have this information, Mr. Mayor, but they get hired and they'll try to negotiate another week, and then you go through a whole process with that as well anyways. Like that, that will be a normal standard probably at some point anyway. So, you know, I think, I agree with the councillors. I certainly understand your concern as well, but I think it's the biggest small step that we can take kind of in the direction that we're probably going to see the pushback on anyways, and, you know, losing good applicants, and trying to, and also at the same time, trying to minimize the turnover in positions and keep hiring and retain employees being a goal. I just, I think in this case, we can, we can go to three weeks and we can be safe, but I wouldn't go beyond that. Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to respond to that comment, too, we currently don't have the ability to negotiate with an employee who gets hired here, because all of our benefit time is listed in the ordinance. That's been a mistake that's come in the past, where a department head has told someone, oh, maybe I can go try and go to bat for you and see if we can negotiate an extra week. And then when they're told it would require an ordinance change, in, under the previous administration, there was one time where a department had actually submitted an ordinance change, saying that this employee shall receive an extra week while everyone else. So that obviously failed real quick, because a lot of the employees were just like, well, why one and not everyone that's there. Under the statutes of the Commonwealth-
Under the statutes of the Commonwealth, if all time off benefits were taken out of the city ordinance book, then we'd have the ability to negotiate through a personnel handbook and negotiate individually with our employees. However, that hasn't traditionally been done because this is the council's check on the executive branch on what we have with our employees and our hiring processes. So that's why we set up the way, just for the historical background on that. But we also, just to throw out there too, in the ordinances and in the proposed ordinance cap, the amount that an employee can carry over from year to year, so that if we do have an instance where an employee leaves, they're capped at how much they can get paid up, so they can't bank too much time out. So we set that cap at how much we would be paying them out. We also have proration, probation language in the ordinances as well, that if we say someone gets three weeks of vacation a year, but they leave in January, then they're not getting paid for three weeks. They're getting paid for an amount of time commensurate where they are in the year based on a quarterly basis. So that language is in there too for protect, to protect the city financially that way. It's a very valid concern and I fully understand where Counselor Brooks is coming from on that one, I just wanted to provide that clarification on at least process-wise with the city, too.
Thank you.
I could say, and if I may, I, I think it's important to keep it in the ordinance and to have some standards. Could there be a little flexibility in the ordinance? You could put it in, but as soon as you provide flexibility, then everybody else is saying, well, what about me? And so that's why, here it is, and I know there was a former mayor who called department heads in once and said, if you're not happy, there's a line at the unemployment office and I can replace you tomorrow. So, I don't, I think that was a little harsh language, but I think that, you know, we're, we're not here to, to make everybody a hundred percent happy all the time. If, if they're unhappy with what the situation is, there's no harm in looking. And I'm not saying that that's what you do, but I'm just saying that's, I left, and it was, it was partly what was going on and partly I was ready, I was ready to move on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm glad we have this informal meeting because it is creating some questions. And one of them I just have from this discussion is, would current employees who have two weeks, would it be retroactive, sorry, to the mayor? Would this change make it retroactive to three weeks for those employees currently?
I believe the effective section in the back says effective January first, 2025. So that would be when those changes, yeah, if, if you look on the last page, section ninety-one, the ordinance will take effect upon the stated dates listed in section on January one, 2025. Following passage and publication is required by law. So it would be in the next, the next calendar year, because we give our benefit time on a calendar year basis, that those changes would go into effect.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments? Counselor Heath?
Yeah, so if I may, I just wanted to say, like, coming from where I work, you know, I started out twenty years ago, started off with two weeks off, I thought I was, you know, I thought it was great. Twenty years later, nineteen years later, I've gained two weeks off, you know, and this exact conversation that we're having right here, this exact conversation we're having with my current job, feeling like I need more time off. Nineteen years, I gained two weeks off. So I think it's, in a world where we are trying to find a home-life balance, not to health, awareness, even more than it was twenty years ago, I think this is just another great reason for, you know, Gardner, for people to want to work here. So I, I'm, you know, I'm actually happy that you brought that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Does anyone have anything further?
Okay, I just would like to point out that relative to the next item, which is the proposed changes of the council rules, within this current version eight of the, of the document, if you go to section thirty-one, article one, section one, regular meetings, and section two, special meetings, so I think it's page. It's at the beginning under section thirty-one. Let me see. So it's going to be page twelve, so right after where we were. So it's section thirty-one, article one, section one, regular meetings, C under there, and then it's section two, special meetings, B. Those two are actually removed in the proposed changes. We haven't talked about the proposed changes, voted, done anything yet. I'm just saying if we did, as proposed changes are right now, if we voted to accept them, these two things would have to be removed because it would be inconsistent between two different documents. I mean, they would have to be, but to be consistent, which is the point of this whole re-review, it would be. So I'd put that on the back burner for now, I just wanted to bring that to people's attention, that that is between council rules and this document, that would be a change if we decided to adopt the proposed changes. Are there any further questions, comments, anything?
Actually, Madam President, on that, if I may.
Yep.
If the state, for instance, though, if those two items, the section one and two special meetings, regular meetings, did stay, is there, and I know it says requirements of the general laws, is there any issue with the new, or not really new, but are, you know, open meeting laws that exist in the Commonwealth, any issue with two-thirds of the members admitting any matter for consideration at any meeting? I don't know if that came up in discussions or reviews.
So that was, so.
Is that what this is?
In my, that, that is why they were going to be removed. I, that was, that particular one would be removed is because C and B, I think they're rules fifteen and sixteen, they would be removed because, my reasoning is going to be, as you'll see soon, is because they're, could be in question, the open meeting law, it's a fine line, it's a gray area.
Yeah.
We can just remove them. So that is, that would be the reasoning behind it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. First off to that comment, in deference to the separation of powers, I didn't touch the language in any of the city council ordinances, but that is a concern, that's not new. But that would have, anyway, but the, because I neglected to come back after I acknowledged that, yes, that ninety days should be sixty days because of the statute. Counselor Brooks is correct on the compensation side. Under the general laws of the Commonwealth, at least chapter seventy, the compensation of members of the school department are set by the school committee in their annual budget vote that gets eventually the bottom line to the council. And the different employment laws of the Commonwealth do say that union employees are paid by their collective bargaining contract, not out of the ordinances, too. We have a situation right now, or at least until we did when we passed the revision to the personnel ordinance, where the inspectors in the building department have unionized in the last year and a half. Their contract was just settled, but until their contract was settled, they were in the ordinances. Now the contract has a different rate than what the ordinances, they have to be paid at the contract rate, not the ordinance rate. So that's also in different state laws there, too. So that is correct, that compensation by ordinance would be for just those employees that are not members of the school department nor covered by a collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions, comments, discussion on this item? Okay. So I think I would say how to kind of proceed forward is, so we had some proposed changes from Counselor Brooks, and we, you know, moving forward, we can take more time on this, we don't need to vote on this this evening. You know, this version eight, the versions before this may have been before the Finance Committee, but started with version seven and now version eight, it's the first time it's before the full council as a whole. And as we set it, it's an involved document. I think we had a good discussion this evening, in my opinion. So I would like to take a straw vote on this item to kind of see where we all stand with how we're going to move forward with the proposed, you know, different changes and what we would want to do at this point. So what we would do is, I'll take a straw vote, a yes vote is in favor of, of voting on it this evening, and a no vote is that you're opposed to voting on it. And then you can just say more time, if you just want to say more time. Opposed, the no vote and more time are two separate things, because no is just meaning like, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make any of these changes, I wouldn't do anything tonight. I guess that's a better way for me to explain it. A yes is, yes, it's fine. And more time is just, we need more time because obviously we have some suggested changes. If we voted on it this evening, you could vote on it as amended, as we know, because there were some suggested changes on it. But if you want some more time, just kind of absorb what we talked about and take another look at the document, we can do that as well. Does anyone have any questions about that? Counselor Nellis?
I don't have a question, more of a comment, I think, with a number of changes, I think taking more time is, at least in my opinion, going to be a good option. Taken our time already, and I think we should continue to take, take our time and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. My personal opinion is we, there is no real rush to this item. We do, I mean, for, we have the January first, 2025 date in there. Actually, Mr. Mayor, if we did go beyond Jan-
That can be amended also.
That would be amended with-
It's part of the ordinance document, just like any of the languages.
Sure, thank you. Okay. So we have time, we've had a lot of time, we have more time on this item as well. And so in my opinion, whatever everybody's most comfortable with, this is something we're doing now, and it's a big undertaking, we want to do it right. Any other comments on that? Counselor Heath?
Yes, so to be clear, more time would be, you know, basically, the next time this is in front of us, the amended versions would be in front of us to see visually.
Well, I think we would, I think we could have another discussion as to how we wanted to proceed, you know, forward with the different changes. I would, you know, maybe suggest that Counselor Brooks submit those changes to the mayor. We can have that version.
Yep.
And we can have two different versions, and when we vote, we can vote on which version that we want to pass. We can do that as well.
Is that where, would you want me to send it to the mayor?
Unless anybody objects, to me, that's the most organized way to do it.
Okay.
With all of your changes. And the other thing, too, is we just have to be clear in which document we're voting on, and at that time, you can, like, for example, we could say we want to vote to pass version six, or no, we'd up to be version ten or whatever at that point, with striking, you know, you could take out some of the changes, you could, you could still do that. We just want to, I, to me, I just want to keep this as less, as, as most organized as possible, so we all understand what we're, we're voting on. Does anyone else have any suggestions? Counselor Nellis?
Those changes obviously would include your changes you recommended at the end as well.
Yeah, so any changes discussed this evening, so my changes that I had mentioned would go to the mayor, Counselor Brooks's would go to the mayor, we'd get that changed version of it. And from there, we, when we vote, we would say, and we'd have this version and that version in front of us. So version eight, version nine, I'm going to call it, and then, like in our next council packet. And then from there, when someone decides to act on the item, they're going to specify which version that they're acting on. And if there are any further amendments, they can make that, we can discuss that. That's, I think, the clearest way that I can make to do it, unless anyone has any objections. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm happy to absolutely do that. Just one thing I would ask for clarification on, because most of the amendments were just clear, change this to this, or, you know, remove this section or something like that, is the membership of Board of Commission section of the up to language that we put in to just mimic what the state law said, if there was any direction that, versus solid number versus the up to language.
I mean, we can decide now, we're having the informal meeting, so is there any, I mean, does anybody object to the two sections that I was, wanted to take out, fifteen and sixteen, just because, and does everybody understand, so glad to discuss it more, I will in a little bit as well, but those are, to me, they, it's just the open meeting law piece of it, that was my reason for taking them off of the rules in the next item. Does anyone have any discussion on that? And then Counselor Brooks, I think the only item that we really had more discussion on, besides the vacation piece of it, was the up to. What's your, do you have any last piece on that?
My, you know, my preference is to make it a fixed number, then we all know what we're dealing with in terms of, I'm going to pick on the golf commission because I know it's five, and it was up to seven, and I think, you know, either it's five or it's seven, and we fill it, and that's, but the up to means you could have three. So, you know, is that, is that how we want to, would we want to operate in an up to environment, or would we rather say this is, the golf commission is five?
In the golf commission, one, just for clarity, is five to seven for that particular one. Some will have a lot, if I remember correctly, their ranges, so there is a bottom.
There could be a bottom, too.
There is, yes, we, it was not, we was an option for that one.
Madam President, if I may, would, would it be possible just to request an opinion of the solicitor on this item, just to, we don't want to go against if the state-
No.
State law uses that language. I think the purpose of this is consistency and clarity, and I think we just want to be consistent and clear, so.
I mean, my, my sense is that the, the statute says up to seven, but the individual towns can say five, or three, or seven, or, and I'm picking odd numbers, because you normally wouldn't do an even number.
Well, we can request, request opinion of the Law Department, the clerk can put that in for us, and then when we get that opinion back, we can discuss that in a further meeting. Like, a motion can be made at a further meeting on an item, and we can do it during discussion and then amend it further, you know, or we get the opinion and it can be made within the motion, you know, just, it just depends, like, you know, this version with the, with the change of X, Y, Z after we have a discussion, we can do that, too. So we'll do, we'll do that. If there's no objection, we'll get an opinion from the Law Department on that. Okay? And then the other item with the vacation piece of it, does anyone have a preference on that? Did you have anything further you wanted to share about that, Counselor? So are we going to leave it as is, or do people feel strongly about changing it? So I, I would leave it, if it were me, I would leave it as it is in version eight.
As is version eight, not as is currently.
Correct, as is version eight of the document we're discussing, correct, which is adding additional. The counsel brought up the reason to go back and keep it. We're talking about leaving it as is, does anyone have any, we could take a straw vote on that, we don't have to take a straw vote at all. Okay, so I think, so we'll leave the document as is, and then again, further down the road, if anyone wants to entertain an amendment when we vote, we can do that, that piece. Is that clear? Okay. Thank you, everyone, this is a, we want to keep this as clear as possible, it is quite the document, so I really appreciate all the suggestions and discussion. Anything further on this item? Mr. Mayor, is that kind of clear? Because we would be submitting it to your office to make the requested changes, but that, so this will, I think, for the purposes of the next meeting, I think it's pretty clear that unless any, if anyone has an opinion on this, we will keep more time on 11289 when we get to the council meeting. If anyone have any thoughts otherwise or differently on that? Okay. So we won't take a straw vote, we'll keep, we'll save more time for this item, we'll get an opinion from the Law Department, that will get to the council likely with our next packet, and then in the next meeting, we can discuss it further, see what we want to do with the item. Okay. If there's nothing further, we'll move on to the next one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will move to item 11423, a proposal relative to the rules of the city council. This item was posted publicly in the city council regular meeting packet on November fourth, 2024, and the council voted to meet as a committee of the whole on it. Since I submitted this item, I will present the proposal to the city council now, and then we will have our discussion, but please feel free to ask questions throughout the presentation as well. You will see that you have an updated version in front of you from what was in our packet. The only changes are, let me just make sure I got this correct. So the updated version on your desks now, it has been submitted to the clerk as well, includes two changes. One is rule thirteen on page three. What I did was, if you look at each of the standing committees, the first line is, and insert the appropriate committee, is the committee on public service, composed of three members, the first named member thereof to be chair. It said chairman, I never had changed that when I was switching around from he to they and the different pronouns and grammatical things there. So those have all changed in each, in one, two, three, four, and five of the committees, from chairman to chair. And then the second change is on page four, and it's rule fifteen. I, this had every intention, I don't know why in the last version you didn't get it this way, but basically, rule fifteen is the order of business for council meetings. And the one that was in the previous version was actually in the rules that we have in front of us now, and it's not what we follow, we cover all the items, but there was extra things in there and things kind of out of order. So this reflects exactly what we do in meetings now, and it added the council comments and remarks, which should have been added when we had adopted them. So that is corrected and updated, and those are the only two changes from the version that you had in your packet. the version that you had in your packet since our last meeting. Does anybody have any questions about that? Great. Okay. So, thank you all. And it is, right now, it is 6:54. We have our regular meeting at 7:30. Depending where we are in the discussion, I'm still going to start on my presentation through the changes that I propose. Depending where we are on this discussion, when we approach 7:30, I may, if it's 7:30, I have to recess this meeting, open the regular meeting. I could recess that meeting, and then reopen this meeting to finish it. So, I'll see what our progress is at that point. And then, if I think, you know, if it seems like we have more discussion to go, then I can certainly close this meeting at 7:30, and I can, we can continue it on at a later date, and that's what I can state at that time, and we can continue the discussion then. Okay. So, I will go through the proposed rule changes and explain my reasons for each, as well as my broader goals in making these changes. As you know, I've been council president for nearly five years, and as part of that, also chair of the Finance Committee and acting mayor during that time. It has given me insight into where our rules are lacking and/or haven't kept up with the way that the council operates. I also believe there are ways that we can improve our process to make it more transparent, easier to understand for both the council and members of the public. And both members of this council and the public should be able to easily prepare for our meetings, and that starts with clarity on our rules and procedure. So, that's really where I am behind these proposed rule changes. So, the most basic change that I am proposing is updating the language in our rules to acknowledge that women serve on this council and can serve as council president. There are certain rules that I believe are antiquated and could be in conflict with the open meeting law. And as I said, my goal is to make our meetings run smoothly and make sure that they are easy to follow with members of the public. For the council president, I have proposed that we eliminate the position of the current rule that stipulates that the council president also serves as chair of the Finance Committee automatically. First, I think that it's unnecessary. And second, I believe, especially in the situation where that individual is also acting mayor, as I was, that this vests too much power in one person. But upon the mayoral vacancy, in the same day, the, I became acting mayor, city council president, chair of the school committee, and chair of the Finance Committee. And so, I just think that speaks for itself. And if you want to try to come up with a scenario where that could happen, I, I can give you one. Okay. So, this will improve debate during our meetings, as the chair of the Finance Committee will be on the floor, and also able to participate fully in the debate. Right now, sure, the council president can step down from the chair, but it being a committee that meets most often and very important financial pieces, and one of the main things that we do as counselors is we are the voice of the people when it comes to our city's finances and where their taxpayer money goes. I think it's important to have three people on the floor regularly that can speak on that matter. I am, I am proposing allowing the council president to appoint what I have termed a special counsel liaison. From time to time, I've seen issues or projects that arise that do not have a formal role for an appointed counselor, or don't always fall under the jurisdiction of a standing committee, or have some other special circumstance that they fall under. So, in many cases, this is resolved by law or ordinance, which provides for such an appointment. Examples are the Rockwell Committee, the School Building Committee, the Capital Improvements Committee, and, and so on in that respect. However, I have seen instances where that is not the case. I think that having the ability would increase and improve communication between the council and administration when those matters arise. For example, as it is right now, a counselor is also a member of the GRA, but that is not always the case. Or for a project like the current Waterford Community Center, or for an issue that may not require council action at this time, but improving that communication will basically aid the council when the time does come. This doesn't take the place of a standing committee, but I do think that it will be for issues or projects before they arise to that level, or fit into another crack somewhere. But the bottom line is, this will give the council, through the president, another tool to assist in our work with the mayor and the city departments, if we have someone who can be a liaison to be sure that a check and balance could be to sure of things that are moving forward that may come before us anyway. Any questions? Comments?
Yeah. So, so the special liaison, that hasn't been codified in any way, and that's what you're trying to do?
Correct. Yep.
Which makes sense to me, because you've been, the council president has been naming councillors to different things for years.
And, and we, and we vote on it, right? Like, we already vote on it. So, to me, it's like, just formalize it. And I think it shows, in terms of transparency, it shows to the public that we have an interest in the things that are going on, and we want to stay in our lane, to be sure that, you know, they're getting done. It's a formal way to bring it through the council. Any other questions? So, I am proposing simplifying and expanding our ability to request a roll call vote. Most roll call votes we take are stipulated by ordinance or law, but many votes are not. Under our current rules, a super majority of those present would have to agree to having a roll call vote. It really doesn't make any sense, and it could enable a majority to be less transparent by refusing a recorded vote. It has also become that this council's common practice is to conduct a roll call vote when a council requests it anyways. So, this will just formalize that practice. You know, a lot of times, I just say, I'm going to do a roll call vote, and no one objects to it. But, you know, I think it's important, in some cases, for a council to be able to request it. And again, and as I said, and transparency, you might as well have someone be able to request a roll call vote, so we're just on record through the yays and nays of what we're doing. Any questions? So, the agenda is where I think that we need the most improvement. During this term, we have had instances where counselors were confused, or members of the public were confused, leading to an interpret, an interruption of our meeting in one case, and an overall lack of clarity at times as to what items are expected to be taken up. Under our current rules, all items are supposed to go directly to a standing committee, and only come to the floor after their review, or if the issue cannot be otherwise resolved. However, that process has only been scantily observed during my years on this council, and I think it has led to that confusion and caused our agendas to be inefficient. So, for example, under the current rules, or more how we have proceeded in the absence of clear guidelines, a counselor could submit an item to the agenda on Thursday, then two counselors could force a vote on that item as early as the following Monday. While there may be emergency situations where this is acceptable, because those do arise, there, where there's just time-sensitive items that we have to come through the council, there should be a process for that that is open and speaks to transparency as well. So, my proposed rule for the agenda covers those instances as well as, under just regular business. It makes sure that counselors can be prepared thoroughly to vote on matters and have a clear and concise meeting agenda. So, this will also ensure that members of the public will be able to know more clearly what is expected to be taken up at a given meeting. Under the current system, we use meeting time to make referrals, or ask for more time, which only takes away from the actual council business we're going to be doing at that meeting and things we're going to be voting on. And just to reiterate, the problem that I see from a transparency perspective is that once an item is on our agenda, it has satisfied the open meeting law requirements and could be voted on. While this is not something that usually happens, there is no reason for it to be a possibility. And we have standing committees for a reason. They do important work. We take our time on those committees, as we all know. And we should support that open and transparent process. You know, there's examples of other councils in other cities in Massachusetts that don't do it that way. They don't utilize their standing committees or subcommittees at all, or items just never end up there that should go there, and they never, you know, end up in a procedure. We utilize our standing committees in Gardner. I think that's something that we should be really proud of and continue to do. So, we should support, again, that open and transparent process. And in the rare instances where quick action is required on an item, this would still allow for that, but it would require that the reason be clearly stated and affirmed to justify that quick action. And that's something I think is very important. I think it'll improve the flow of the agenda items, and most importantly, remove any confusion as to what is to be expected to be taken up at any regular meeting. Any questions on that? Counselor Brooks?
I, I only have a comment briefly. Thank you, Madam President. The mayor had mentioned earlier this evening, the Appointments Committee had 50-plus appointments that were given this past January. I think this change specifically would have been very welcome back then. I know we had issues, not only the complexities of coordinating the appointees, the mayor's office, and the committee, but also having 50 appointments on our agenda created confusion with the public and the appointees, not knowing if they should show up to the meeting or not, to be sworn in by the clerk. So, I think this, this rule change would directly improve that situation going forward. So, I welcome it.
Thank you, Counselor. That's actually one of the direct examples, recent example we've all been, a part of that was, came to mind with it. And then, the other piece of it is, if there is an item that, you know, is, the public is very interested in, and it's going to be a referral that evening, or it's even going to just be referred to committee of the whole, it still is, you know, they come to the meeting, they show up, they just don't know. It's, it just makes it that much clearer. And that, your example speaks directly to the agenda, and it being clear and efficient to what is going on there, if it goes to the first. Counselor Brooks?
Yep. So, if I can follow along on that, say, with those appointments, then they would just not show up on the agenda for subsequent meetings?
So, what, so what would happen is, they only get to the first, so in the, in the rules, so the proposed rule for the agenda, and this is, this is-
I'm assuming they would, the first time on, when the appointments come up, they would go on the agenda and be referred to appointments?
They would not. So, what this would do, because this is actually how it is right now. They actually should go to the committee chair first, and then, as it's even written already in our rules. And then, you know, we just have these little pieces of paper in the desks, and you write them out, or you could email and send the item to the committee chair. No one does it that way. Everything comes to the council president and the clerk. We put it on, and then we refer it. And that way, and then it goes to understanding committees, and then, that committee may or may not have met, for whatever reason, by the time of our next meeting. So, these things are just sitting on the agenda. So, what this does is, it actually is going back to what we, we really are, you know, are supposed to be doing. Because the way we do it is fine. It's allowed. But this way, it's like, when we have an agenda in front of us, it has already been to the committee first. So, the item would go to the committee chair, and, and that they would call their meeting, they would have their meeting, and then, once they make their recommendation, it goes on the council agenda. So, when it comes to us, we get reports from committees, you know, it's, and it's been, it's already been discussed, and there's no referral at that point.
Okay. So, so if I may, it would be similar to what is happening at, at tonight's meeting with many of the finance orders. They were presented to the Finance Committee at their meeting on Fri-
On Friday.
On Friday, and now are coming with a recommendation.
Yes.
So, those would show up on our agenda. We would, as counselors, we would see it first on a Finance Committee agenda, rather than on the City Council meeting agenda?
Mm-hmm. Also, as a way for the public to be more engaged in the subcommittees, because the work we do, again, is important and it's thorough. And also, as the rest of the council be more engaged in the other subcommittees. And, you know, I think that that's a really good example, Counselor, is Finance Committee items are very rarely ever referred to the Finance Committee, because they always just come to the Finance Committee Chair first, who happens to be the council president. So, we just do it that way. It goes to the Finance Committee first. So, by the time we get to the council calendar, we're already reporting, because we've already studied that item, or we're asking for more time, or whatever it may be. You know, a lot of those are, they're financial items, and those are time-sensitive a lot of the time, or they're things that take a little bit more study. But there's, again, it's already written in the rules we have right now. There's other reasons to even follow that, because we would get an agenda in front of us, and the Appointments Committee is the example in this case we've been talking about. But it's like, if somebody's on there that night, the Appointments Committee has already met. They've already considered the appointment. The person sees their name on the agenda, and they know they can show up and be sworn in. That's just one example of that.
So, if I could, if I could keep going here.
Or not sworn in if we don't confirm it.
Right. So, so with, with the 50 appointments we got, those, those 50 appointments would be on the first agenda for the Appointments Committee?
They would first go to Appointments Committee. They would never be on the agenda-
And, and would those-
Before that.
And from the Appointments Committee standpoint, would there be like 10 appointments per meeting posted until they finally get them all done? Or would, on the first meeting, 50 of them go on, and then they post 10 at a time, or?
So, so 50 would go on, and then they would meet on whatever they, whoever they, you know, whichever items they met on. And then, once those items were met on, those appointments would come to the council agenda, and the action by the council would be taken.
And then, the remaining, the ones they hadn't met on-
Would remain?
On their next agenda.
Correct.
So, they would be carrying them over at several meetings?
They would be carrying them over, but at least would be on one agenda in one spot, and not all over our agenda, like we ran into, that's trying to figure out what was. And we can do that, but it's like, you're skipping all these items, because they just can't, they're not going to do all 50 in one meeting. And that is the extreme example of that, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think unintentionally, that's how we've kind of been doing the Appointments Committee meetings, because I, as chair, I had to modify our agenda to have a discussion portion, and then a separate referrals from the full council. That way, I wouldn't lose track of the appointments in our agenda. But I was having, one of the very first meetings of having 50 appointments on the agenda. I had people showing up that we weren't ready to discuss yet. So, having a space for those appointments until we were ready to schedule the interview with them. So, it's been actually how the Appointments Committee's been functioning since January.
Thank you. Further discussion? So, within the proposed rule agenda that I have up here, about a little over halfway down, an item may not appear on the council calendar without first being referred to a committee unless such request is needed, writing to the clerk, and the clerk contains the consent of the council president and the chair of the committee, to which the matter would have otherwise been referred. So, that kind of covers the case where, you know, that, that covers any kind of, like, extending circumstances, where it's not like a regular item that we're, we're going to know what to do with. But before that, the clerk, basically, items that go to the clerk as they go to the clerk now, and then they consult with the president, and then they get assigned to the committees, and then we have our regular agenda that has all of the things that have already gone through committee on the agenda. So, it just makes it really clear that we are likely, we are most likely to act on these items tonight. We never have to act on anything that's directly on our agenda. We can refer back to the committees. But we're not starting with a bunch of items where you all know we're just referring to committees in the first place. Any further questions? Okay. 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 This is a pretty simple and straightforward clarification of the amendment process. I think the most important part of this change is the allowance at request by guarantee of this rule for a 10-minute recess to consider an amendment. I can tell you, as council president, when amendment comes up, I mean, just depending on the meeting or where you are, you have to be sure you have it worded correctly. Sometimes, the counselor may submit it to the clerk at the beginning of the meeting, so I have it in front of me. But it needs to be read back appropriately, and that everybody knows what they're voting on. So, what this, what this does is, it will just ensure transparency and make sure that the counselors who are about to vote on a matter, when they came to a meeting prepared, looking at a matter, as well as the public observing the matter, have enough of an opportunity to understand the process of the amendment and what is being considered, because amendments don't happen all the time. And when they do, it's, it's important, because it's not something that was in our packet. But it's important for people to understand in the room what the amendment process is, what the amendment is, and what's about to happen next. When we vote, what are we doing next? And so, this was just to put something in there about amendments that would guarantee us to be able to have a 10-minute recess at any time that there's an amendment. Counselor Brooks?
And the rule five, five floor access limitation, that limits speech to twice, two times for total of five minutes each?
Mm-hmm.
So, what's the, does that mean I can speak for 20 minutes? So, what's the, does that mean I can speak for twenty minutes? Or, does that mean I can speak multiple times? Sorry.
You'll have to apologize, councillor. I'm gonna put a rule on here that says, "No apologizing," and propose it. See what you think. Um, Councillor, after the minutes, is it removed by? Uh, no, I, I mean, that's not how I would interpret it, but maybe other people would.
Rule five says, "To obtain the floor, members shall address themselves to the chair."
Right.
"On recognition, they shall not speak more than twice in any one question without permission of the council in more than five minutes at any time."
Right, no, I know.
Yeah. So, I'm just wondering what, what access they're gaining from?
Councillor Tyros, go ahead.
I'll just give my interpretation. Maybe that'll help. I, I interpret this as, say, we've gone around, uh, big discussions occurring, we've gone around twice. Technically, you've, you've used up your time to speak, but someone has an idea that they've said, and now you wanna make an amendment to the item. This gives more opportunity to that, to the council to do that.
Right. So, it's multiple times rather than longer times?
Uh, yeah, I think it's just that opening opportunities for, for, for the discussion.
So, I, so just to be clear, like, it's, you can, it basically, if you already spoke your two five-minute times, and maybe I can reword this to make it clear, but if you already spoke five minutes twice on something, if you then wanna offer an amendment, you can speak again. Is that, in so many words?
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Councillor Alons?
Yeah, I think you're, you're, the, the head there. I think that second sentence, it just needs to be added, be in, um, in making them, in making a motion to amend or something to that effect. So, a councillor offering an amendment, exempt from all five floor access limitations and permission requirements, um, somehow to be, to be able to make said amendment, amendment, but I'm sure it can get worded better.
Okay.
Councillor Brooks, I think you're right. I don't think we want, we don't want unlimited access.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or comments on any of that? Questions? Okay. Thank you. So, that can certainly be reworded, but, reworded, to be clear, but the general concept, do you have any, like, objections or anything?
No, no.
Okay.
I'm really asking these questions for clarification, so that when we vote on them and move forward-
Right.
-I understand what, what they mean.
That was in the goals. Transparent and clarity. That was the whole thing, so we wanna make sure we're there. Thank you. Okay. So, our current rules have little structure as to how the process of our rules actually work. Um, so, under the current rules, a rule may be amended or repeated at any meeting. And, I'm sorry, a, a rule may be amended or repealed at any meeting. I don't think this is necessary or proper. There are times where it may be necessary to suspend a rule, which is not something that we do, like, ever. Um, but, there could be times it is necessary to suspend a rule, but making permanent changes to our rules should require, um, more of a process to prevent any parliamentary, like, problems or tricks. So, if you look at the proposed rule and the current, um, rules for the council rules, it directly addresses this. This could be, you know, a moment where, um, you can basically just amend or change a rule at any time, and this is what would, the proposed rules, that's what changes it. Um, I hope that's clear. I struggled with this one myself, but that's the best way I could explain it. Any questions, comments? Councillor Brooks?
I saw it on, on your rule twenty. You're saying a rule may be suspended for a defined portion or entirety of a single meeting by a majority vote of the council on the motion of a councillor. That had formerly been two-thirds. I'm kind of on the fence on that change, just because if, if you're changing the rules on, if you're having a contentious issue and you have a majority that wants to push something through that requires a rule change, is that what you want? Do you really want two-thirds of the council to go along with a rule change to push it through? If that makes sense?
Well, so-
Or, or, or a suspension of the, a suspension of the rule to me is a temporary change.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't change it. It suspends it, right? It doesn't actually change the rule.
Correct.
So, so that's different there, but I think, I think this actually directly addresses exactly what you're saying.
But, it would take a majority to suspend a rule-
Mm-hmm.
-on a particular item.
Sure, to suspend it, but not change it. So, I, I'm not, like, I'm not against in the moment, you know, the two-thirds, I mean, that is, that is the, you know, that is the two-thirds majority, right? So, it isn't just half the council, so it is most of the council that wants to do that. But, it doesn't, this is really more on the lines of, like, changing the rule.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with it, but it's not a deal breaker for me. I'll express it that way.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, we'll see how it goes, and if it-
I can maybe offer more clarity on that, too, but I want a minute-
Yeah.
-you know, to think about it, because to me, that was like, I don't see it any, you know, I don't see it any different than that, but I'm, you know, glad to consider it, of course. Okay. Any comments, other comments, questions? Okay. So, rule three, in my opinion, is unenforceable and has not been enforced during my time on the council. It is also suspended by state ethics laws. So, if a councillor has a conflict, they are required to make the appropriate filing to be in compliance. Also, as the rule is written, to be excused from a vote due to a conflict, the council has to vote to allow a councillor not to vote. So, that really doesn't make any sense, because it's not up to us, as the other councillors, to determine whether or not a councillor is conflicted according to state law. And, so, the other provision that a councillor is, the councillor shall not leave without permission, um, I definitely think that this is completely unnecessary, um, but what would we do really to enforce it if we found ourselves in that situation? Um, I think we can be reasonable in assuming that this is pretty unlikely to be an issue, and unless we are prepared to order the police to force a councillor to remain at a meeting against their will, um, I just think it's in our best interest to drop this and not keep it in our rules. Um, so, this was, um, so, this was one of the rules that I think should be removed. And then, rule eight is also unnecessary, because our rules don't otherwise specify specific motions that may be in order. So, if a motion or a procedure is not forbidden by our rules, then it is already allowable. And I think that should be consistent across all of our rules. Um, and I just wanna be really clear on this, 'cause I know that we have, we have used this. Um, but, without this rule, you can still divide the question. It's still an allowable motion. Um, we follow Roberts' Rules of Orders anyways, like, for all of our rules. There's a lot of different motions that we could put in our rules. So, I only wanna remove it, because why are we, like, singling out this one type of motion that's within our rules? Um, I just don't think it, um, is necessary to be in there, because you can still do the action whether it's in there or not. And, there's a lot of other motions that we could single out and throw in our rules, but I think they'd be very long if we did that. So, it just kind of sticks out to me as something that's unnecessary. Is there any questions or comments on the removal of rule three or rule eight? Okay. And then, uh, I'm proposing to remove rules fifteen and sixteen. Um, we did speak about this earlier when we were on item one, one, two, eight, nine. Um, I think that they have the potential to be in conflict with the open meeting law, and they have provisions to allow for matters to be considered that have not been properly published beforehand. So, the structure is just better served, what I have proposed, in the new rule for our agenda. Um, and so, I think that we don't need to be, you know, as the open meeting law has also kind of evolved and been interpreted and come out, I just don't think that either of these are necessary to have, um, on the agenda. You know, if we have to add a necessary item at a particular time, then, um, we will add that item, and the agenda can be amended, but that is at the council president's discretion right now, and, uh, you know, again, in transparency, in the spirit of the whole reasoning and the goals we need to do this, uh, I don't love to add things and amend the agenda at the last minute. It really is if it's a necessary item, and during the meetings, it will be discussed as to why it was necessary to do that. Now, you know, I'm council president, and other presidents might think of that differently, but I think that makes sense, and that's really reasonable. Um, and then, kind of the item, if you have till twelve o'clock to submit, on noon on Thursday, to submit an item to the agenda, well, if we adopt these proposed changes, one of the previous changes is that items go to the subcommittee first anyways. So, there's no, there's no twelve o'clock, there's no time for that, um, that really needs to be met. I know it's, it's great for the clerk. I understand that, um, but I did get, you know, the clerk's opinion on this, and, um, it kind of seems that, you know, anyways, even, even as of, even as of right now, um, the agenda is, is, has to be posted on, uh, Thursdays for our Monday meetings in order to comply with the open meeting law for the forty-eight-hour rule. Uh, and so, you know, she can get something at noon, and, you know, we try to stick to that as often as possible, and it is in there, but, I mean, we could take it out, and, and if we didn't have any other rule, she could get it off at that time, and it could get on the agenda. It would be on time. It wouldn't be last minute, because that's when our items, our gems are posted anyways. But, like I said, just to reiterate, if we accept all the other changes, the change that comes along with how items go onto the agenda, if they're in a subcommittee first, we know well before that meeting that it is going to be on the agenda, and that's another part of just to keep it organizational and efficient, and that in turn does help the clerk's office. Um, so, that was the reasoning for removing items, uh, rules fifteen and sixteen. Any questions or comments on that process? And then, these are simple, minor changes, just to round out our rules. So, rule one adds an additional requirement, that an annual schedule of regular coun- council meetings be published at the beginning of the year. Uh, this is already done. Um, the clerk publishes them on our website, but this will require it to be done, and it shows that, again, it's transparent, where if anyone wants to know any time, we're meeting throughout the entire year. It's already in the rules as to when we meet, but they can see exactly what it is. So, holidays, you know, et cetera, where the meetings fall, they can be ready to go, but, um, we already do this. This just requires it, or makes it required. And then, rule nineteen, that is proposed, that's the council rules as rules for standing and special committees. So, they don't, at this point, they, there won't be any discrepancies. The standing committee chairs and the committees can fall back to the council rules, so they have something that they're able to follow, and so there isn't questions of things at, um, the, uh, standing and special committee level, which also, if we're going to change the way that we do this and to make it uniformly, that items are gonna go to the standing committees first, this also helps them have a better foundation, um, where they are able to run the committee and get these items into their committee and discuss appropriately, and if there's any question, they have rules to set back on. And that's it. Is there any questions, comments at seven twenty-seven? Anything to add, any, anything else? Okay. Thank you, Councillor Tyros.
I just wanna thank you for putting this work together. I think it's something that the council shouldn't be afraid to regularly review, so I'm glad that, that you've done it, and I think a lot of these changes make very, very good sense, so, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, so, the, um, what I would state on this item, just, um, regards to our next, our regular meeting, which is starting in two minutes, uh, I just wanna see, does anybody have anything further on either item one, one, two, eight, nine, or item one, one, four, three, two, I'm sorry, four, two, three, that were the subject of the informal meeting this evening? Is there any other thing to discuss? Questions, comments, suggestions? Um, so I think for this item, uh, if we, and I, I recognize this is the first kind of discussion explanation that we've had of it. Um, Councillor Mack is not here. I believe she may be at, uh, the regular meeting. This item being the rules of the city council, I would think that we would have everybody here to vote on them. Um, I know we can do anything with a quorum, but I just think, you know, this being the city council rules, if, if it's important, you know, for everyone to vote on it, um, it might be reason to wait, uh, or have everyone have a chance to vote on it. But also, uh, if anybody wants to vote this evening, you know, we can, we can do that, too. Uh, but I was going to propose that we would maybe take some more time on this. Maybe re-watch this meeting. You'll get a copy of this. You know, you can reach out with questions, whatever it is. Any further, anything further? Uh, just, we can do, um, quickly here, are we agreed to take more time? Is there any objections? Anyone wanna weigh in on that? Um, more time on this item?
Yeah. It's rules. Let's take, let's be deliberate. Take the time.
I'm sorry?
It, they're rules, so let's be deliberate and take the time.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? Okay. I forgot to ask at the beginning of this meeting, if anyone is recording tonight's meeting, no one else has entered or exited the room besides the mayor and Councillor Mack? Anyone else? Okay, no one's recording tonight's meeting. Hearing nothing further, the meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.